Good morning. This is the Board of County Commissioners for work session. It is Wednesday, August 30th, 2023. It is 8:40 a.m. The session is set to go until 10:30 a.m. This is a hybrid meeting. We're at 3,000 Pacific Avenue. Thank you. Southeast Room 110 for public virtual attendance. You may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. I'm Carolita Mahia. I'm the Chair of the Board. To my right is Vice President Ty Messer. To my left is Commissioner Gary Edwards. Also in the boardroom, we have County Manager Ramirez Chavez as well as Assistant County Manager Robbie Campbell and Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder. We have staff who are planning an economic development to do a follow-up to a follow-up.
Follow-up?
Follow-up of the additional SMP public hearing. So pass it straight to...
Great. Joshua Cummings is the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development, CPED. Yes, this is a follow-up to a follow-up, but to a follow-up. But the recognition that this is an important topic for our community and the ongoing work that's been completed by your CPED staff, as well as the Volunteer Planning Commission, multiple community members, and then you, the Board of County Commissioners, over multiple meetings to discuss the buffer widths and what all of this means in very technical terms, with the recognition that what is decided here at the county level will then be provided to the Washington State Department of Ecology for their review. And one of the things I think is really important to recall is that this isn't benefit to all of our community members. And that when we think about the layers of decision-making process, we start big, obviously, with the buffers. And we work our way down into these shoreline environmental designations. We as staff want to ensure that the conversations are transparent and clear, that the board has all the information necessary to make these decisions, and we appreciate the input that we've received from the community. So as I kick it over to Andrew Defobis, who has been the lead and excellent guide on this work, I want to ensure that we're clear with the Board of County Commissioners that this is a layered decision-making process, and it's not the end. If the Board of County Commissioners would like to have conversations about how things are applied or where the designations work and how they actually are impacting the community, we're open to all of that. So this has been a long time coming, but you've heard me cheerlead in the past that progress is what we have been directed to by the Board of County Commissioners to move forward on this topic, and we continue to move forward. So thank you for that, and we look forward to another opportunity to moving forward today. So without further ado, I'll hand it over to Andrew.
Share my screen. Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. I am Andrew Defobis, Senior Planner with Community Planning, and we're here today to continue discussion of the county's shoreline master program update, or the SMP for short. So we'll give you some brief project background to provide some context to the board and also to anyone who's watching, and then continue to explore some specific topic areas that were brought up during the public hearing and items that the Commissioners have requested to receive information on. We'll revisit one item on shoreline buffers and then look at shoreline environment designations for specific shoreline reaches, revisit the decision matrix prepared for the board's public hearing materials, and finally, I'll provide some additional requested information on shoreline variances from the last briefing. Thurston County is updating its shoreline master program as required by state law. The update includes both comprehensive and periodic updates to shoreline regulations that have occurred since the current SMP was originally adopted in 1990. The SMP regulates development and redevelopment of the county's shoreline areas, and generally, this includes Puget Sound, large streams and lakes and associated critical areas such as wetlands and floodplains. The board held a public hearing on May 16th and has been holding regular work sessions since that time to refine the documents ahead of considering them for local adoption. Ultimately, as Josh mentioned, the locally adopted SMP is submitted to the State Department of Ecology for review and will take effect upon a formal approval by Ecology. So we want to circle back first on shoreline buffers. The board has made some decisions on buffers over the last few work sessions. As you know, this has been a highly commented upon topic in the SMP update. And at the last briefing, a majority of the board voted to increase the marine conservancy buffers to 250 feet. We realized after the fact that those buffers would actually be larger than the buffer that was proposed for the natural SED, which is 200 feet. And the larger buffers are generally given to the most pristine shorelines. The natural environment typically is given the highest degree of protection in the shoreline master program. And so we wanted to bring this issue back to the board and also make the board aware that large buffers on conservancy shorelines may also increase the number of existing structures that find themselves within the buffer relative to smaller buffers. So we wanted to give the board an opportunity...
Say that again.
Oh, sure. Essentially, the larger the buffer that you apply to an already developed shoreline, the more structures that will find themselves within that buffer and subject to those regulations for existing conforming structures.
So usually, this is bigger than this.
Right. So I, and I...
Well, I mean, I'm ready to talk about this. So, I mean, the second part of what you said is, like, that's not news. That's not something we didn't consider, and we, so I would set that aside. But the, in my, in my meeting with you and planning commissioners and stuff, there was something about the 200 being some kind of jurisdictional limit. I couldn't remember. It's not based on science or what the right, it's not really about what the right buffer ought to be. It's that there was an argument that our jurisdictionally extended 200 feet, so it was senseless to, at least, I didn't know if that was limited to that category or what, but I don't know if the whole board, I don't think that part of the discussion's ever come up in a board work session, so if there's an issue there, we need to hear about that.
Yeah. It's my understanding that the buffers can be larger than 200 feet. So 200 feet is, by default, is the shoreline jurisdiction that comes from the Shoreline Management Act. It's, you know, for, in this case, it's Puget Sound, and lands that are 200 feet from the sound are within shoreline jurisdiction. So shoreline rules apply within that strip of land regardless of what you set your buffer at. Even if the buffer's smaller, the other rules will still apply. But the issue here specifically is that you have, you know, a gradient of conditions. So, you know, shoreline residential is the most developed, then conservancy is more natural, and then the natural environment is the most pristine, right? And as you step up, you know, that degree of environmental conditions, you typically, that's how you advance your protections. And in this case, you've got, you know, the smallest buffer for the most developed, the highest buffer for the shorelines that are in the middle, and then a slightly smaller buffer for the most intact shorelines, and it just doesn't...
Well, I understand that, but there's an overlying issue here. The question was, should we have been told not to go to 250 because 200 is the limit? The argument that was made to get natural at 200, should that argument have been made when we were deciding conservancy? Or should we, you know, that's one piece. I'm losing my train of thought on the other side of it, but...
Let's try your question slightly differently. So I think what you're hearing is shoreline act extends to 200 feet. But Andy, the question is, can our buffers be 250?
What's the point of that? What does that do? And then my other part of my question was, then why was, you know, we adopted a previous draft, and that was recommended by Fish and Wildlife and a whole bunch of other groups? And his question was, well, why would, if 200 is our limit, why would we have been recommended to have gone to 250 at all?
200 is not the limit.
Yeah, 200 is not the limit, and I think that's been an area of where the discussion has evolved over the last several months. And since we've had our sit-downs, my most recent guidance from ecology staff that I work with is, you know, you don't necessarily have to stop at 200 for a buffer, but the record just needs to support, you know, the decision-making, so...
So let's try again. The shoreline act only goes up to 200 feet. What happens after 200 feet? At 250, what jurisdiction is there to apply?
It would still be, so 200 feet is the, is the, is the bare minimum. If you set a buffer that is larger than that, or if you say you have 200 feet, only takes you halfway out to a wetland that's associated with that water body, the act says the rules apply all the way out to the edge of that. So 200 is bare minimum unless you have a larger buffer or some other critical area or something, and in those cases, you extend shoreline jurisdiction all the way out.
So does that, you said your, your understanding has evolved just since we had our meeting, so was the planning commission, does that undermine the planning commission's rationale for why they limited the natural area to 200? What you've learned since they've done their recommendation?
I think it's a piece of information that they may or may not have had. You know, the stream buffers have been proposed at 250 all along. So I can't recall the specific conversations, but it's possible, you know, had they had information that those buffers could be larger than that, they may have made a different decision. I don't know.
So the question may be that I need to increase the natural or reduce the conservancy or leave it at... I mean, if we wanted to square this, if we wanted to follow your principle of, they should go, they shouldn't go backwards. They should go either the same or up as you go down the chart. The choice would be to either reduce conservancy back to 200 or increase natural to 250 or something else, but those are the two most obvious choices. And either one of those would be reasonable under, like, the parameters. Because I was worried about this whole 200 thing when I read the briefing memo.
Let's clear that up. So shoreline act says 200, but the local jurisdiction can go more than 200.
Well, yes. I mean, 200, it's two, the, things are two different considerations. One is, one is a width of, within this band, shoreline rules apply. The other is, you know, you set a buffer width. And if you, you can choose to set that buffer width larger than that, default 200. If you set that buffer width smaller, your shoreline other rules beside the buffer still apply, all the, you know, use criteria and things like that. So it's kind of how...
If they go beyond the 200, the 50 feet will have a different criteria.
It would still be under the shoreline jurisdiction. So this is where shorelines is kind of like a zoning overlay. You have this geographic area within which you do your planning, but you have the option to extend those rules out in certain circumstances if the conditions warrant a larger buffer, or again, you have a wetland or something that by law pushes that boundary out.
And so by, like, not common sense, but like reasonableness, usually natural makes the case that you can extend those buffers.
As you move down this chart, residential to conservancy to natural, your environmental conditions or the sensitivity of your environment is increasing.
So Commissioner Messer's question, options is some point.
Yes.
Because the way it is right now is inconsistent in a way.
It just feels cut back.
And one last question. The fish and wildlife recommendations that we got, I'm just using those, you know, not that those are gospel, but we did talk about those when we made our decisions. Were they saying to take nat, what were they saying about natural?
They, back during the, I'm trying to remember if it was the planning commissioner or the boards. DFW did submit comments, and that was when we had, I think it was for the planning commission, and we had a couple of different options around buffers because the buffers had kind of changed and morphed as the drafts had gone on. DFW supported one of the options that would have created larger buffers on the marine shoreline, specifically 250 feet for the conservancy and natural environments. That's what, back in 2017, that was the original proposal, was to have 85 and then 250 for everything else. And DFW did support that at the planning commission stage.
In their most recent communication, is that still, they were just making reference to the same...
I think so, yeah. They had previous, I believe that letter referenced their previous point about choosing, was it option A or whatever, had been put in the planning commission draft.
I'm sure I would, too, have questions, sorry.
Yes. I think this is where legal maybe might have to get involved. But at some point, when you go past what's the norm, I don't know what you want to call it, don't you generate the potential for more appeals in the future which might end up ruling against the county if that takes place? So it'd be an appeal to the, to the, I don't know, Growth Management Review Board, who may never initially. But under our state constitution, there's the clause of no taking or damaging. Under the federal constitution, it's just no taking. So damaging is described as anything that could lessen the value or have an adverse effect on the property without justification, I think. effect on the property without justification, I think. So do we end up in a situation if we take the bigger buffer or impose the bigger buffer? Okay, we're going to have more appeals. I'm sure ecology and DFW would love to have the bigger buffer, but they're not the ones that have to defend against that adverse taking or damaging or the appeal to the growth management board. So is that, are those statements basically true? I don't know the answer to that.
Well, ultimately, the Department of Ecology accepts and adopts it. They're the ultimate owner of the SMP. We craft it for local circumstances. They adopt it, and they're supposed to defend it.
I don't think they defend it. The county ends up being the defendant of that regulatory process. And if there's any awards, awards given, for an example, you know, so if the county is found, the county ends up paying that, not ecology or Department of Fish and Wildlife. So I don't think we can consider those requests myself anytime they go beyond the norm. And then one other thing I kind of question about that, the distance, is why isn't there any consideration for the the geography, I guess, of the property where, you know, I can understand that buffer, like especially during in a floodplain, for an example, because it might get wet, you know. But when there's fifty feet of that valley that's basically flat or, you know, and then goes up, right? But this but this two hundred and fifty is not really considering that. So I think there's, we should have some exception figured in there. But I'd like to know what legal says about that particular issue. I think that's pertinent to the future of how we move forward. And, you know, obviously, I don't want to do any more taking than I have to do, but I want to protect the environment at the same time.
It's within the Board of County Commissioners jurisdiction to decide between these numbers.
Sure.
And legal will allow for that, and then they can review that. But the question remains, back to Commissioner Minzer's on point observation, do you want this to be less or do you want this to be more?
I want it to be less, but.
This is natural? So not a lot of stuff is being built there, correct?
Not a lot of stuff exists there now, and those would get the most stringent protections.
But I want that answer before, you know, I'd like to have that legal answer.
What what legal answer?
Are we exposed more by going the extra distance?
By extending the buffers in natural areas where things don't exist?
Yep.
And how does the variance process feed into?
I mean, the other piece of it is, I don't want to force people into going going to the hearings examiner if we don't have to, because that's ten, twenty thousand dollars sometimes.
So I just want to kind of go back in time and recognize that staff did a nice job. We barreled through a conversation in our last meeting, got to some good numbers, but looked at the numbers and wanted to provide this reasonable conversation to the Board of County Commissioners. So we're open to receive whatever input the board, full board, needs to have a conversation on making sure these are square. If there's more data we can provide that's helpful, we're open to provide it. But we also want to make sure that we honor the individuals that have their shoreline environmental designations, which all of that kind of plays in together. So it's up to the Board of County Commissioners how fast or slow you'd like to go. But our continued goal is to move forward. And so if you'd like to pause on this to get more information and not consider extending or decreasing and move on to the shoreline environmental designations, that's fine, or we can have this conversation. So either way is great with us.
So, I mean, from from me and my standpoint, I'm I'm ready, right? And then after legal can review and they can be like, either yay or doesn't pass the sniff test, but I think we need to send them numbers for them to actually say yay or nay or.
It's hopeful.
You know, I I that way, there's a variance that they can compare to. For me, I'm for natural, right? If conservancy is to fifty, I'm saying, well, natural, it's two fifty for something that really, for the most pristine areas. That's where I'm at.
And I would just say that there's a, oh, it's okay. It sounded like you were down through statement. You know, these numbers aren't just, let's just pull bigger numbers out of a hat. Like, these were, these are, in a sense, compromised numbers. I mean, there's the charts on wildlife habitat, and there was an argument made, I think, by staff for four hundred feet in the in the most pristine areas that are ecologic. I mean, there there's multiple considerations, but there's 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 basis for. I mean, I guess what I'm trying to say is I don't see two fifty as overreach in the natural area on the marine shoreline, given what all the information that we've had to chew on about, you know, the.
It's interesting because shoreline buffers are a little bit different than critical area buffers. Critical area buffers are more, you're protecting the environment. Shoreline buffers are, you're protecting the environment, but you're also accommodating reasonable uses of the shoreline that the shoreline management act also allows. So it's not just the buffer width, it's also the allowances within that buffer. So, you know, you you I think what you said is on point, that these numbers are, you know, within the range that science would suggest is needed for to protect certain functions on the low end for certain functions, depending on what you're talking about. But it's that buffer width and then also, you know, the limited instances that you do allow some development inside to accommodate the other goals of the act that that sets it up for success. That's what ecology is looking for.
And we're going to be talking about that later in the meeting, right?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Or or later in the process before before the board considers local adoption.
Do you have, just at the top of your head, an example of an allowance, of something within the?
Yeah, so the draft talks about allowing a water-oriented storage structure in the buffer. So if you're going to be doing kayaking or aquaculture or something in the water, something that you obviously need to use the water for, the draft enables you to put a small structure in the buffer to accommodate that. Or, you know, building a dock, obviously, that you can't have a dock two hundred and fifty feet from the water. It's got to be there. So the master program, you know, has buffers on development, but it also allows, you know, reasonable uses of the shoreline, because there's that three-prong, three prongs of the shoreline management act, is protect the environment, encourage public access, you know, and facilitate water-dependent uses of our shorelines.
Because anywhere a dock would be allowed is going to be in the buffer.
Right.
Whether the buffer's fifty feet or.
Potentially, you're going to need stairs, you're going to something like that, so.
And then there's other, if I remember right, I don't think we've gotten to the details, but there's there's even more flexibility than that for certain types of structures. There's a process for for making the case to do, I can't remember what the parameters of.
Yeah, I think this draft in.
For.
This draft in general has increased flexibility when compared to current rules. If you're talking about expanding an existing structure or reducing a buffer, things like that, it's it's got more flexibility built in.
So what I'm hearing, if I may, is Commissioner Edwards would like to go down to two hundred on the conservancies. But if if if, but also if if the option is to increase the natural to two fifty, he would like to have a legal perspective. Commissioner Mejia said it will be great to, you know, putting words in your mouth to go with two fifty and then send it to legal to see if they have any perspective. And I'm hearing the Commissioner Minzer is aligned with Commissioner Mejia.
I want to make one one final, one final push if I can. And that is that I do not believe the planning commission ever discussed this this difference. And so I think that's problematic. So if we move on it without knowing, did they or didn't they? Okay, we don't know for sure, right? Because we think.
No, no, we know for sure that they discussed the range of buffers.
Yeah.
That that the conversation about shoreline act versus jurisdiction versus buffer width, maybe not in the nuance that we've just had, but that's a conversation.
I had a meeting with the chair of the planning commission about that very issue, so I know that that was something that they chewed on. Now, it sounds like there may be some new information that they didn't.
That's all that's all I'm saying is that.
But at this point, we're not sending it back to them, so.
They might not have had that adequate information, which, if that's the case, and then they send it forward, and we get challenged somewhere down the road on whatever we decide, it weakens the county's position to justify that more excessive taking or damaging.
So I push back that we've had a transparent and full conversation in public about all of this information, and I don't think our case is weakened in any way because of that transparency.
Well, I do. And that's why I would like to have legal review it before we make the decision. Now, we're going to have a discussion here, and we're going to have a vote, you know, and and the democratic process isn't going to go forward. But I just think it's always better to have everything adequately discussed by planning and making sure that we get that information from them after they've had the discussion and then recognizing that our concert, our our taking portion of it or damaging portion under our constitution is different. It's different than federal. And so whatever could be leaned on a little bit more in the line of protection for the county, I think we ought to do it that way. But we'll have a thumbs up or thumbs down here momentarily.
So I think you introduced another proposal to send this conversation back to the planning commission.
Well, I'd just like to make sure they discussed it.
I just want to verbalize, I think, what you're suggesting, right?
Well, I'm saying, don't make a decision on this until we find out, did planning actually have a chance to kick this around when they send a recommendation to us? And what does legal say about our exposure? That's the only thing. I I mean, I don't know, so it takes two more weeks or something. I don't I don't think it's such a mandatory thing that we be, I don't think we should ever push to hurry something along when there's questions. That's all.
And I believe Commissioner Minister, Commissioner Mejia would like to go with two fifty.
It sounds like it.
And then see what legal has to say in that. What's up here?
Yeah, in terms of a hurry, I mean, this was due ten years ago, so.
There's no. Well, it sounds like we didn't cover everything, so we should cover everything.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. Thank you.
And again, in terms of the transparent process, I appreciate that staff brought this back as a conversation for the Board of County Commissioners to ensure that this conversation was had. I also want to highlight, I think Andy's important point, that this discussion about buffers, not only does it provide some parameters in terms of restrictions, it also provides allowances. So it's not just what would be deemed a taking, it's also providing opportunities for flexibility and development within the buffer areas. So just making sure that we have that full context and understanding of what we're deciding, what the board, county commissioners is deciding.
Okay, could I have a follow up on that, ma'am? So just so the public knows what those allowances could be, are you saying there's an administrative allowance that can be taken into consideration by planning, for an example? Or are you saying, go back to the hearings examiner, and that could be the allowance?
So about three minutes ago, Andy just described some of those allowances, aquatic uses for like storing kayaks, potential docks. So we just had that conversation in terms of what those allowances are. And then in terms of the process, that question that Commissioner Edwards is asking, how would that process work within those buffers to allow for those uses?
It depends on exactly what type of use you're talking about. Some of them are going to be allowed without a variance. Some of them may require that administrative variance, others may require that full variance. It just depends on kind of the scale of what we're talking about.
So what is the process to get there for the citizen? It sounds like there's three options. There's so there's one option, maybe the person that's looking over the plan gets to make that decision. Maybe another one comes to the director of planning, and maybe another one goes to a hearings examiner. I'm just trying to figure out, for the citizens, what is the process that they're going to be going through to accomplish that variance, whatever.
I think they're typically going to be dealing with one of our development services planners, or they're going to be dealing with with a hearings examiner. And in that case, it's planner and, right? Planner and a hearings examiner.
Collaborating on on what you said, all depends, it depends on the impact of the proposal they will have on the shorelines.
Yeah, but who makes that determination as to where the process goes?
Depending on the impact, if the impact is small, could be administratively.
Correct.
And if the impact is large, can go all the way to hearings.
Who determines small or large? That's kind of what I'm looking for here.
That's what this plan is. You're doing it right now.
Right now, you you probably have the opportunity to set those variances.
We haven't gotten there yet. I mean, it's a top figure.
This is coming up.
It's later on the list that we're going to go through, deciding which thing goes to which process.
What to be administrative, the variances versus hearings examiners?
TBD.
And then there's, if if the applicant disagrees with whatever comes down, whatever we decide, they always have the option of moving forward, including going past the hearings examiner and going to superior court, I guess.
Well, the the it it any permits offer appeal.
Yeah.
Yeah, and absolutely that any 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 residents who apply, they don't agree with the findings, everyone has their right to appeal.
Okay. Could we go, I think this is where we would loop in the shoreline hearings board on appeals relative to Commissioner, the Nigerians, et cetera.
See, I've I've always been an advocate that anyone that appeals anything the government entity imposes on them, should they be successful in their appeal, I believe they should be compensated for the cost of getting to that conclusion. But that doesn't get off first base a lot of times either, but hopefully, a lawyer will take it on and I'll get testified to that at some point. But I just think that's crucial, that any time the citizen wins, they should not have had to expend all their resources to win. So maybe that's a new approach and not necessarily for this issue. So it sounds like we got a two to one vote.
Yep, I I had that one.
And then legal will.
As they will anyway.
I'm keeping track of any any time I hear that, we want legal to look at that. I'm keeping that, because that's kind of where I'm engaged in Travis. He's been involved in the process and, you know, his latest guidance was, he's going to give it a general look for the things he needs to look for to make sure it is approved to code or to form. But any issues the board wants him to look at, he will look at those as well.
Like a good attorney, yes.
Yeah, we're keeping track of that.
He'll say it, he'll he'll say it depends, right?
Well, but I will ask.
Which is why we try not to ask open-ended questions.
Right.
So I know we're ten years behind, right?
We're twenty, depending.
But when, so if we were to complete this, just going back to your timeline, Andrew, for to complete this this year. I'm wondering, when would the next round start?
I believe it's due in twenty twenty eight, but it's a it's a periodic only, it's a periodic update, so.
So it's not an overhaul?
Right, the overhaul was due in twenty eleven. The periodic update was due in, I want to say, twenty twenty one, something like that. But yeah, it's just, as there are incremental changes in state law, you know, those are packaged up, and every eight years jurisdictions need to review their SMPs and make sure they're in line with those things. It's a much smaller lift than a complete comprehensive overhaul.
So you have the opportunity to do a comprehensive overhaul overhaul. That's what we're doing right now.
We can overhaul the overhaul.
And then in twenty twenty eight, right, as we've made these decisions, some of them being data gathering, right? That was in the previous discussion that we had about, we need the data to actually back up if what we're deciding here is actually working. And so that in that point in twenty twenty eight, is that data going to come into play? And, you know, these buffers are going to be discussed again and being like, actually, these buffers, like, you know, they are working or it's actually not working based on this information.
We're going to be be taking a look at no net loss as a whole, how the program is achieving that goal, and buffers are one piece of that.
That that is new, this version.
Right.
And I think that's where I don't want Commissioner Mejia is explaining.
Being resources.
The non-net loss will not be done at individual permit level, it will be done at the department level.
It will be done at both, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, well, I will move on. The next issue we're going to tackle is shoreline environment. The next issue we're gonna tackle uh is shoreline environment designations, or SEDs. Assigning SEDs to shorelines is part of the shoreline master program update process, and it fills on the information that was gathered in earlier phases in inventory characterization. An SED is similar to a zoning overlay. It's one way to think about it. Uh, it controls the types of land uses or modifications that can occur in that area. It, uh, what permits may be required and the buffers and other development standards that new development must adhere to. So earlier in the SMP update, an SED report was created that matched up uh SEDs to the county shoreline reaches, and it showed which criteria were used to match those up. And to review, um, the SEDs that were used in the update include the natural SED for our most intact pristine shorelines. The shoreline residential SED for the areas that are the most developed, think like Boston Harbor area. And then the rural conservancy or urban conservancy are for any additional shorelines, kind of in the middle. They're, they have function remaining, but they are also have some degree of development. And then, of course, below the ordinary high watermark is the aquatic SED. Scroll and not just click. So here's some background information on the issue that's before the board today. During the board's public comment period, you received comments that requested redesignation of certain shoreline reaches. As I mentioned, uh, the SEDs were originally established at the outset of the update project, although some of them have been reviewed more recently. The planning commission looked at several requests for reconsideration, both before and after their public hearing in twenty twenty one. The criteria is, that is used to assign SEDs is found in that twenty thirteen SED report and in the draft SMP, about in both places. And that criteria was also part of the materials that's included for this work session. So a few caveats before we begin, to keep in mind, is that the criteria that was used was originally the SEDs were assigned at the reach scale, so a pretty large swath of geographical area, and the criteria is intended to be applied at that scale. A lot of the examples you're gonna look at are smaller than a whole reach, so I just want you to keep that in mind. And we've done our best to apply and adapt that criteria to, to a smaller area. It's also possible that a parcel or a shoreline reach may meet the cri, some criteria of multiple SEDs. But really what the county should keep in mind is trying to find the best fit based on all the information. Um, and the presentation I'm gonna give you is just a summary of the information. Uh, there's a full staff report attached. And we've teed up some options for the board, but there are certainly other options that the board may consider. Out further ado, okay, the first one we're gonna look at.
Just a preliminary question. So your, your slide kind of answered it. When you said SEDs control allowed uses permit and development standards, cause my question was gonna be, is buffers the only thing that the shoreline designations are relevant for? Because, you know, the, the main seemed, it, it seemed like the main category of objection was when they went from natural to conservancy and that, and the reduction of that buffer is no longer there. You know, so maybe their, their concern might be not mitigated, but somewhat new, new, you know, mooted in a sense, if we were to adopt these new buffers, but it sounds like there's a series of other things that would still be of, of relevance to them, to be in one versus other.
Yeah, I think the, in the vast majority of cases, I don't wanna generalize too much, but I think the buffer is the biggest thing people are concerned about. A lot of times it's properties that there may already be developed, but they're concerned about the ability to add on to a home or put a dock in or something like that. So the dock is a good example of, yeah, the SED may control whether you can do it or not. So, you know, if you're natural versus rural conservancy, the difference between those is gonna tell you, can you even do the thing you wanna do? If you are allowed to do it, what permits are required, what buffer do you need, or what, are you gonna have to follow, and what other rules are gonna apply? And again, as you go from that shoreline residential up to natural, it's an increasing gradient of, of regulation.
Bottom line is, those folks are still, even despite the change in buffer, they're still gonna probably wanna make this request.
I would.
Speculatively, because there's all those other elements.
I would think so. Um, yeah, and, yeah, we're gonna look at three that are on the marine shoreline and then one that's a lake. So the decisions the board has made probably do affect those other three, but we'll continue to go forward.
And I think just as a good kind of cheat sheet, scorecard, page two of one hundred and thirty-three in your packet outlines the four that you're gonna be discussing. It might be a good place to keep notes, so it's all in one place. Two.
Page two.
It's the, um, it's the memo right here.
Sorry, I was looking at attachment eight and I was like, I don't remember seeing it there. Thank you.
So the first one is LPA zero seven, which is at the bottom, the fourth one on that page.
Right, yeah, yeah, sorry. I, I reordered the presentation, um, just based on the folks I knew were watching and were probably gonna either come or be on Zoom and wanted to um get those ones first. So we are gonna start with what's on the bottom of page two.
Patterson Lake.
Patterson Lake. Okay, so the, uh, if you look at the screen here in the upper left-hand picture, the reach you see outlined in Lake Lou is LPA seven to LPA eight, which is essentially Lake Patterson seven to Lake Patterson eight. Um, the owners of the parcel circled in yellow have requested reconsideration of their proposed SED. And they also own a home on the parcel immediately to the south, so they own two parcels there. The SED on this subject parcels uh circled in yellow is mostly conservancy with a small portion of it being uh shoreline residential in the southwest corner. The entire parcel is proposed to be natural, along with the rest of the reach, uh, and their home is shoreline residential. So the landowners have requested that the county, rather than go to natural for the entire um parcel there, they've requested that the county restore that current split designation to the parcel to reflect the fact that there's residential development on a portion of that lot in the corner, uh, and then to redesignate the rest of the parcel to, to urban conservancy. The full analysis is in the staff report that came to the board, but some factors for the board to um consider here are that much of the parcel appears to be heavily vegetated and unaltered. There have been some residential improvements to the southwest portion of the parcel, including.
Can you point to that?
Oh, yes, uh, sorry. It is, so this is, um, yeah, smaller picture that shows you the parcel relative to the rest of the shoreline reach. This is a, a blow up of that parcel, right there.
Wait, this is a, the, in red is a blow up of the one in yellow?
Yeah, correct. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And where's the house?
Their house is here. It's in a separate reach. It's already.
So they're not asking for anything to be designated around where their house is?
Correct. The house is already proposed to be shoreline residential. They're good with that. What they're asking for would be to have this little scrap be shoreline residential and the remainder be urban conservancy. That was the main piece that they asked for.
And how often do you do split? Is that an unusual thing to ask, splitting the parcel like that?
Tend to try to avoid it. Uh, if you look at the, and again, I wasn't here in twenty thirteen when they did that original work. So if you look at what's proposed, you do see some areas where it did happen, but the, the methodology as it's written up speaks about, you know, trying to keep those reach breaks on parcel lines for the ease of administration. Uh, in this instance, the landowners did get a survey prepared, so that could be something that the county uses to actually put, you know, lines out there, uh, or, and when they go and, you know, someone wants to develop something and we say, well, where's that actual line? That's something at that time they'll need to have surveyed to make sure that it.
And it's already surveyed now, is what you're saying?
They did submit a survey, yeah.
So if, why wouldn't they do a boundary, I'm sorry. Why wouldn't they do a boundary line adjustment or something if they wanna attach that to their existing property? And maybe even put that in some kind of a open space thing or something?
They, they could have done a boundary line if they had wanted to. I think if, if that boundary line had kind of jogged up that way, uh, when we were looking at that in twenty thirteen, it's possible that they may have made that reach and given them what they're looking for. The methodology does talk about and acknowledges that, you know, the conditions don't automatically change, right, where those parcel lines change. But it's trying to get that best fit, you know, where, what's the best?
When you said what they're looking for, what, what are they looking for?
The app, so they've, um, two potential outcomes. One would be um to create that, recreate that split. So if you look up, uh, well, wherever screen you're looking at, that this little portion down here is shoreline residential, and that the remainder of it is urban conservancy. That is, what you can see on the slide there, that's the landowner's preferred request. Uh, a second potential option that I think they would support is um to designate the entire thing as urban conservancy. Uh, and then the third option that staff has teed up for you would be to retain the natural SED on the whole parcel.
And what do those things actually mean that can be done with the property? I mean.
There was a final, the planning commission recommendation Andy was about to share.
Yeah, was, was the natural, um, cause this came before the planning commission, this exact same question, and the planning commission um voted to keep it as natural.
Can I just?
Yeah.
Just so I'm kind of tracking this on the staff reports for attachment eight. It starts on page fifty-six, right? And that's where it starts.
I don't hope they print out. If I look on here, it's gonna.
Yeah, I, I'm just trying to make sure that.
So if, if, if we did the, you were talking about kind of trying to look at the reaches and trying to keep some consistency, which sounds like to do that, it sounds like what you were implying is that there might, in a particular reach, there might be one parcel that by itself would fit, you know, conservancy, but if it's all developed, we're gonna keep it residential across the reach. So in this, applying that principle here, if we did the yellow as conservancy, let's just say, to keep it simple, then we'd have residential underneath the yellow. The yellow would be conservancy and then everything above would be natural. So we would be, we'd be jumping, um, you know, to three designations in that short area. Is that, I mean, how problematic? You know, we, we didn't do the whole, you know, county thing, so we don't know how rare that is or how unusual or how problematic it is for the county to administer, you know, uh, permits and stuff.
I think it's gonna be pretty rare, uh, simply because we haven't had a lot of these requests. The planning commission handled about a dozen of them. You got four of them in, in your process. Um, and yeah, I think at the outset of the project, we were looking, you know, thirty thousand foot level and where do these environments change? Okay, that's where the reach break should go. Um, it's only due to public comment that we're really zeroing in and focusing on this because that's the comments that you received. So I think as long as it's, it'll be clear, you know, whatever the board decides will be clear and, and will be implemented. Uh, I, I think the split designation is probably the most tricky piece, but in this instance, there was a survey that was produced, um, that can be used to actually um put, you know, state where those boundaries are. It will be up to the future developer to, you know, survey those boundaries, find those lines, and then.
I'm curious about the future developer. What, what does that mean? I mean, he wants to, somebody wants to put a subdivision in there?
So I think it's honoring the fact that, and, and back to your question, Commissioner Edwards, looking at this area that's, that's here, there, they, this is where they've made some improvements to the property. So that is the por, portion of the property that has um trails, it's got some vegetation clearing, landscaping, there's a concrete staircase, there's things like that. I think what they're interested in doing here is just continuing to maintain their residential use of this property. And in this instance, it's, it's those sorts of things.
Is there a home in there?
There's not a home on that piece, that portion now. Could someone come in in the future and wanna build something there, potentially? Um, I would also note that I think that area is also a fairly sloped, so they're gonna be dealing with that too.
Request to allow a future relocation of a residence by keeping the shoreline residential as requested. Is that?
So I think yes, and I'm thinking about what the difference would be. So at urban conservancy on a lake, the, the buffer is a hundred feet. If it's natural, it's two hundred feet, correct? And so in terms of future potential use, and not the three split, but could it, the tip, recognizing that splitting the designations could be probably difficult, could the tip remain urban conservancy and go straight to natural for the rest of the property? And that would allow for the property owner to still have that flexibility with the two, the hundred-foot foot buffer? Instead of going three, which is the two.
Really small area?
Yep.
Could, but.
Cause that's what is south, correct, is urban conservancy?
The area to the south is, is shoreline residential. So what they're saying is to, what they're asking for is to increase that shoreline residential to a scrap of that property.
It will, it will not create an island.
Yeah.
Right.
So urban conservancy with the residential, sorry.
No, I'm just, I'm kind of going, so on page sixty-seven on the letter that was submitted, I, you know, just from the aerial pictures, you can't tell, but they're saying, page sixty-seven, third paragraph. Yeah, on the step. And so it says that there is the presence of a dock, concrete staircase and pathways uh, and landscaping on that, on that side, right, which we can't really see on aerial.
Well, we can if I go to the aerial. I thought that might be helpful, um, if I can pull that up. Cause that's got our shoreline designations on it as well.
Look at you, you seem gee-ahs.
Yeah, this is the tool that we created for the planning commission, which is actually has been extremely helpful. So this is the subject parcel, um, show you kind of what's happening here. So here you have, this is what we, the current designations are. You've got conservancy, you've got shoreline residential. And you see that right now it's got a split. That's the rules that are in place today. And this is what's proposed. So the issue they're, they're having is that it's going from conservancy on part of it to natural on the whole thing. And they're asking essentially to keep, keep this. That's their preferred, uh, what they would, their preferred outcome.
So in the proposed though, so go back to the proposed.
Yeah.
Could that pink be on the tip of the green?
Yeah.
And go from residential and a little tip be residential and the rest of the property be natural?
Natural.
I think, because it, it wouldn't create an island, really, on that proposal.
Now, giving flexibility on that parcel.
The pink will have, instead of have a straight line, will have a jog, including that triangular piece.
Into that park property.
Only way we create a, an island is with that portion where, you know, if this became pink here and this went back to yellow, cause then you have one strip of yellow in between, long.
Request of, from the applicants actually doesn't really create any issues.
I think we'd be able to implement in any case, and I think quite frankly, there's sort of, it, it.
The most logical would be pink, a little tip of pink and green.
So the proposed, the section that were the.
Split.
Yeah, then just increase that to shoreline residential, kind of the pink, and then leave the rest.
Go to what it is currently. Go back to the, to the pink and yellow proposed, the other one.
We always talk about precedence, that the county sets a precedent when they do things. Does that cause a precedent setting if we do something here that?
The split.
It sounds like, yeah, I mean, it.
That was worried about too.
Yeah, okay, so I'll let you ask that question.
Let me, the split, you know, I mean, like, that seems the most, but I mean, we, we can't get into a, you know, we can't get then everybody coming back going, well, let's split my parcel up here, you know, I mean, that.
That's what I'm wondering.
But in this, I believe, is, is somewhat logical boundaries. If we go with the applicants, what it does is the pink will have a triangular piece in here.
And it goes to the uses, right? The current uses already have trails.
Right. Yeah, they've got, and, and Commissioner Mihia, you asked about the dock, so there's the, the dock. And you can kind of see, it's not the clearest here, and I think also the parcel lines are a bit jogged. They're not exactly accurate. But essentially, this whole area here, you know, you can see that there's landscaping, um, and they've got their trails and stuff like that. So I think, quite frankly, you can kind of make a case for, for different outcomes here. You do see that this, the residential uses do bleed over that parcel line. Um, and then you're, this is kind of in a transition zone, which is kind of a theme you're gonna hear me talk about, where the parcel in question here is, yeah, it largely looks to be undisturbed, but it is kind of on the cusp between this residential neighborhood and this whole area up here that is much more natural. So, you know, maybe urban conservancy could be appropriate for that remaining portion of that parcel, just to reflect that fact that it's in transition.
But that makes an island and doesn't honor the concept of the reach.
Correct.
So let's, let's not go down.
I mean, it's all trees.
Which is gonna mean.
So my question is, when the planning commission was looking at this, right? And they went from this is natural over conservancy, like what were the discussions there to kind of make, make that? But.
Yeah. So I think, I, I did go back and listen to the, the um discussion, and I think one of the things they were looking at is that there has, this parcel has been overall pretty minimally impacted. And then, you know, my recommendation at the time was that the parcel seems pretty undisturbed as a whole, that the shoreline residential SED is reserved for the highest impacted shorelines and that sub parcel reach break is inconsistent with the overall methodology. Planning commission concurred with that analysis. Um, since that time, they have submitted a survey. So we do have the ability potentially to use that information, should the board wish to pursue that sub parcel reach break. As to opening up issues, it's certainly possible.
Backing up just a little.
Any decision of the board.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
So how many?
That, that really is.
Okay, I just.
How many SEDs did the planning commission consider?
They looked at, oh, gosh, I guess, I said twelve, I wanna say it was, yeah, on the order of fifteen or so across.
So these are the ones that they couldn't quite decide on, that they thought the board needed consideration, so they went through the process, go for it.
Uh, these are, well, no, these are the ones, there's three of them that, uh, people are essentially, uh, appealing, for lack of a better word, what the planning commission did or did not do. In this case, the landowner came and made the same request to the planning commission, the planning commission did not make, make that change, and so the landowner submitted comments to the board as well.
It's helpful, thank you.
Do we have obligation to do something or not? Is there some, is there an obligation that the county change this, or can we make just a recommendation back to the landowner? Why don't you put this in open space, or whatever, I mean, make it for, I don't understand why we're trying to make these individual.
Could be my fault, I mean, I, I mean, I had a group, I think we haven't gotten to theirs yet, but they came and presented their case to me, and I was in the back of my mind kind of hoping that it wouldn't be persuasive, and I would just kind of be like, we're not going down that road, but you know what, I found it pretty persuasive. And then I didn't wanna be inconsistent, so I asked staff, I said, well, how ma- you know, I don't wanna just pick a one off, you know, how many of these do we, do, do we really have? And, and there wasn't that many, there was this four groups, so I said, let's just, to be fair to the, to the folks, and me not just cherry picking one group, like, let's just go through the pros, the, the trouble of, so to speak, of looking at these four. You know, if there were, if there were twenty-four, we might not be able to manage that, but.
But do we know if there isn't gonna be twenty-four later on? It, might there be, once this gets through, and people see this might be the way they wanna go to?
I mean, maybe, but I'm just telling, from my perspective, there's been a pub, uh, 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 extremely long planning commission process, and two public hearings of the board, so, I mean, and I've, I've heard from everyone that, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I'm cutting it off, you know? These are the ones that have continued to, to, to argue and advocate, and at least one example, they showed me that they had a pretty reasonable argument to be considered, so. Like, for me, I'm just gonna consider these, and I'm not gonna open the rabbit hole again, um, that could be for the next, uh, shoreline update. But, you know, there are these, this group of four that I felt like needed a, a fair shake.
Almost akin to.
Cause yeah, it's really hard to.
We, we ended up doing, what, we heard, somebody that wanted to create this little parcel, kind of a, they wanted to create a park, or what did, what was that thing we had?
Oh, yeah, the.
Sometime back.
Landmark program.
Oh, the landmark, yeah, the landmark.
And that gets kind of complicated, I just wonder if by doing this, we aren't opening Pandora's box to.
We try, we're trying to give Andy the easy ones.
Well, I, I mean, I totally agree with you, Commissioner, and I was very reluctant, but, you know, when I, when I, after that one meeting I had, I just, I can't, I can't just, you know, the board has the latitude, and I can't just say, well, I'm not, you know, even if I think planning commission's wrong, I'm just not gonna do anything.
What about Pandora's box, I guess that's my question.
Because it's too much work, I just can't say that to people.
Are we gonna be put in a position that, okay, we do this, then somebody from Summit Lake comes in and says, well, gee, I got something similar here, I wanna do that. So do we tell them no, or?
Well, they will.
Do we tell this outfit, well, there's a better way to go, and that would be open space, for an example, or one of the other programs?
They will be probed in next update, that you go through with this plan.
Yeah, they'll have to update it.
They'll have to wait for ten or twelve years?
Well, then, then this, next update, because what you are doing is.
I mean, I try to, my thing is, I try to be fair with everybody. So that's, that's where I ask that question about Pandora's box, that's all.
You know, it's like for, for me, it's like, you know, we, we heard a lot of public comment, and there were specific folks who have been very involved in the whole process. And I believe these folks, that, you know, these four proposals here that we're gonna be reviewing have been involved in the process since the very beginning of it, and I feel like that makes a huge difference, right? They've been, uh, providing, you know, this one that we're, we're doing, right? Like, they have a whole study submitted, uh, you know, on, on this, on this whole piece, and um, there's been kind of a lot of back and forth, and a lot of, like, what can we do to kind of, like? So I feel like that's the difference between someone then that comes up and is like, well, I wanna change my, my designation, it's like, well, you know, like, these folks have done the work, and I feel like to not consider them really is, you know, they've been doing the studies, they've been showing up to the planning commission meetings, they've been showing up to these meetings as well. And so I feel like that's the difference between this and someone who just comes up, and it's like, okay, you know, this is your, yeah, this is your chance to get involved, and in two thousand and eight, right, like, you, you know, yours can be considered as well, but.
Thank you.
I think that precedent is different.
And I, I think that hits it right on the head, like, it's up to the board of committee commissioners to decide on how far or broad you'd like to go. These were the four that, to your point, have been, you know, working through this process for quite a long time. I think my suggestion in the interest of time, we don't need a decision on each one of them right now, but it might be helpful. Now you know that the Patterson Lake one is the different options, we have three more to go, uh, it might be helpful to just.
Are they all on Patterson Lake?
And maybe let's not, oh, yeah, there's, there's three others.
Those aren't Eldenland.
And just to, just so you can see a picture of what those are, and then we can come back at our next, uh, follow-up to the follow-ups, and have a further conversation on what the patents might be.
Okay, so there we got three saltwater and one fresh, is that what we're working with here?
So going back to, to this, right, like, I'm, a- and going back to the, um, the technical memorandum, right? Um, part of what they say is, um, shoot, where did I, I lost mine. Something where they were looking to expand or extend, and I lost, I lost where I was on this. Um, and so with that, kind of, I, and so I'm asking, right, just, you know, was there something like, were they waiting for this designation, and now that it's kind of changed, now their plans will have to change, I guess, is?
So that's why I think that maybe just having a quick overview, and then having a pause in between, those folks can speak for themselves, but we have the information that we have, and so that might be why it's helpful to just move on to the next one.
Okay, so just then, your proposal right now is to just do a high level overview of all the four proposals, and then we can come back to each one.
Pick out which ones, that we might do or might not do?
Yeah.
Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
But are we picking winners and losers as we move forward then? I guess that's my question.
I don't, even, even after you make a decision, if you deviate from the planning commission recommendations, which you do have the latitude, I don't think you will be picking winners and losers, I think you, you just do justice to our request from a citizen.
And keeping in mind the concept of the designations by the reach, this is part of the process.
What was our final decision on that landmark thing, what did we do on that? Did we just didn't do it? I can't remember.
I, I don't.
Following up with legal counsel, with the questions that you asked.
It's still pending.
Stay tuned, we're meeting with Travis.
I did go look at that property, by the way, so.
So if the board would like to continue moving forward, the next one is, uh, twenty-nine thirty Eldenlet. Second from the bottom, if that's the board's.
So that is on.
Twenty-nine thirty, and then we're just this one.
Where, where's, where, where's this?
I think this is the one.
Uh, are you looking for the?
Yeah.
What page is the, um?
I'm looking for what?
Staff report on?
Oh, here it is, right here, I got it, right here, thank you.
There's enough paper here that.
Great, okay.
Confused.
All right, so now we are taking a look at the east side of Eldenlet, uh, and what you're looking at there is Green Cove. So we're looking at reach M E L twenty-nine to thirty, which is Eldenlet twenty-nine to thirty, and that's outlined in light blue. Uh, this area is currently designated conservancy. The planning commission reviewed this and changed this area that's highlighted to natural during their review. Uh, several landowners have, have written in and came into the hearing to express their support for returning this SED to rural conservancy. Some things for the board to consider here are that much of this reach is, uh, very heavily vegetated in shoreline jurisdiction, although on the north end, there is a large area that has less intact vegetation.
But what?
Less intact vegetation, and I'll, I'll, I'll pull up the other slide, and we can look closer in a moment. Um, another consideration is that this area has an intact estuary, which we know estuaries provide important habitat for a variety of species throughout their life cycle. There are a few structures that are present within shoreline jurisdiction itself. The parcel on the north end has a home on it, one on the south end also.
When you say the north end, is that kind of the north?
Yeah, it's, uh, this, this area.
Yeah, okay.
That's a house right there that you can see.
Okay.
Uh, and then the south side of this also has one house that's partially within shore, shoreline jurisdiction. Um, the shoreline does not appear to be altered with things such as docks or bulkheads. Um, I would also like to point out, um, that there's a large parcel on the south side here that kind of fronts right on the uh, inlet, uh, is owned by the homeowners association and is used for recreation out there. Uh, the homeowners association has expressed support for, uh, the natural designation. So some options for the board would be to, um, to designate the entire reach as rural conservancy, which again is what many landowners requested, with the exception of the homeowners association, to retain the natural SED for the entire reach, which is what the planning commission recommended. The third option would be to designate two parcels on the north end as rural conservancy, given the level of development, and retain natural for the remainder. So I'll pause there, uh, I can bring up the other picture if that's helpful.
Bring up the other picture.
Commissioner Mensah?
Question, so if I remember correctly, the what I think I was told was that the sta- the staff had recommended, like, there was an initial, whatever, this initial proposal was conservancy. And what the folks who lived around there were concerned about was that, they said it was, I'm trying to remember the, I, I may get this wrong, but it was something to the effect of late in the meeting, at the end of a meeting, one of the planning commissioners kind of proposed, sort of out of the blue, that maybe this would be better suited to natural. And the planning commission, long meeting, were tired, didn't talk about it much, and went ahead and voted to do that. The homeowners not knowing that that was even on a possi- like, they weren't there to comment, because they didn't even know that was a thing that, that was potentially gonna happen. So they've come in subsequently and given public comment and whatnot, but that was, they wanted me to know that about how that unfolded with the planning commission, which suggested to me that maybe the original proposal from staff was conservancy, um, or for at least part of what we're talking about.
So the original proposal, so again, currently, this is conservancy. And we had a citizen write in and say, you know, Green Cove is a very valuable estuary, you should have natural all the way out, right? So I looked at this, and the conclusion that I came to was that certain portions of this yellow should be turned green and be natural, but that wasn't necessarily warranted across the entire geographic area. And specifically, um, these couple parcels up here, where you can see the, the pattern of development sort of changes, so. Um, I'm gonna lose the image, but showing you, this is the two hundred foot strip, this is the shoreline jurisdiction. Uh, if you kind of keep in your mind where that is, and I turn that off, you can see this area to the north, it, there's a lot less vegetation when compared to the south, um, there's clearing that's been done, there's a home in shoreline jurisdiction, compared to the south side, where you see a more intact swath. That was my rationale for saying a portion of this area potentially would be better suited as natural, but perhaps not all of it.
Yeah, I just didn't see how you could get to natural, like, on that top piece, when there's a house in the bu- in the.
And that's the third option is the split designation, so go back to the proposed.
Can we go, can we look at current again?
Oh, sure.
Just.
Current, yes, currently conservancy.
Okay, and I, I'm kind of like, my brain is still on the last one, and it's trying to like, jump to this one now. Um, so I apologize, uh, so for this one, right, this is the current designation. The planning commission wants to make it natural, and the request is to keep it as is currently?
So there's a couple of requests.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a couple of requests.
The HOA is saying, the south part kind of looks like a booty, right? So the foot, the sole of the booty, the HOA wants to be green, and
This parcel.
The homeowners want the top to be, remain urban conservancy. And so that's the third option that the, that Andy just presented, was essentially go back to the proposed, was to split it, uh, the green, kind of right there at the toe.
The, here.
Yep.
Can we make what you showed there, you showed a, a blue outline?
Yeah.
So.
So this is the parcel that's owned, oh, oops. Um, this is the parcel that's owned by the homeowners association. So those, the, they have said, we're okay with natural, we support that.
So that blue outline could be natural, and then the rest can stay conservancy?
Portions of the.
It's a big, and it's a big parcel, it's only through here where it's jurisdiction, I'm just zooming out so you can kind of see, it's, it's a big parcel.
Should, should that boundary line that you're showing in blue, should that be a little bit more to the north, is it not quite in the right spot?
That's a, well, that's a parcel boundary, but it's quite possible that they're not totally accurate.
Not surely, yeah, there's.
They don't align necessarily, right?
There, there, there is, there is that.
Okay.
So.
Well, I just wanna know, what's, okay, so is that boundary you've been showing us, is that the two hundred foot setback or the two hundred and fifty foot setback?
This is a two hundred foot band.
Didn't we just decide we're gonna go towards the two hundred and fifty?
Our technology is only as good, we can't do up to the.
You can't do in the future?
Come on, he's doing super good.
Well, anyway, so won't that make a difference as we review this?
Potentially, but the concept is still, do you wanna have it all green, or do you wanna have it half green and half yellow?
Well, I'm kind of with Commissioner Mensah, though, you, you've got a house, and driveways, and a bunch of other stuff, it looks like that you're trying to lump in there, especially if it goes to two fifty.
Which it's gonna be a considerable.
Can you go back to the, I, I, I just need to point it out, so my brain can like, actually.
Do you want the, the briefing materials?
No, you, can we go to the natural one?
Yeah.
So the proposed.
Okay, so then, the HOA is okay with this.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, and so the request is for these to be?
Yep, captive conservancy.
Conservancy.
I would, if I may, uh, I would say, so the landowners, this one, this one, this one, and these are all saying, we want rural conservancy. Uh, this big HOA parcel, they're the ones who have said, we're okay with natural.
Okay, so then, this is a different parcel, this parcel is okay with natural.
Yeah.
Um, these little humps right here, they want.
Stay urban conservancy.
So then, I'm, another question is, how come these, right, got, how come theirs got split, their properties got split?
Those are just parcel lines.
So are these parcel lines right here?
No, 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 the, the yellow are parcel lines, so, yeah.
So but.
So she's asking why the green is on part of the parcel?
This is a uniform two hundred foot band that's just showing the false shoreline jurisdiction. So this is just an overlay, uh, the actual, where that line is, or where the buffer is, has to be determined in the field. It's just, that's our best guess we can do.
With the survey?
With the data, right, yeah, exactly, they'll need to have some sort of.
Yeah, the swath is, is the buffer.
Okay, so then.
That's what Commissioner Edwards was saying, okay, this, basically, the decision he just made is two fifty, but we're not live technology yet.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then, these, this, and this wants to be yellow.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they're okay with green.
Yeah.
This three other parcels want to be yellow?
Yeah.
That's the request.
So, let's see if this can do it differently, so, and I.
Thank, thank you, I just need to like, kind of put the pieces in my head.
This is interesting to me, now I've got a question, cause I'm not very sure, this is a weird situation where these, like, you've got two dif- I was never really imagining two different parcels in the, within the thing, and if you expand that fifty more feet, you've even got, you know, so you've got these three, but parcels that, they're clearly not natural.
That is a two hundred foot line, so if there's a two hundred and fifty foot buffer, the buffer is gonna be bigger than that green line.
So you're gonna be more parcels affected.
Do we, do we, when we, we're looking at this reach, but we've got natural and, and basically residential, almost, we've got two, you know, we've got two.
Do, but, so, so the, one of the things you look at is trying not to put new, trying to put residential structures in the natural designation, you try not to do that. So if I turn off the proposed, and you look at that area, you can see, it's not really the structures, it's lots. Uh, and I think that's why originally that was proposed to be natural.
So would those parcels go into natural, Andy, the ones that have buildings on them?
Um, the portions that you see in shoreline jurisdiction, yes, one.
Just an overlay.
Yeah, this is just an overlay, but the two hundred and fifty foot buffer would, is gonna pull those structures.
Are, are there undeveloped lots that this is gonna cover?
The HOA parcel is not developed, but.
Yep, but is it supposedly going to be developed or what?
I think they use it for recreation, that's my understanding, is that's the intended purpose, it's commonly held.
So can you have that in natural, can you have that recreation area in a natural?
I think that's their proposal, they they are okay with being in the natural, it's just a.
Yeah, it goes back to the inventory characterization and, you know, how this area is being used and the environmental parameters it has, it's pretty pristine. I think that's why it was originally, um, that's what the planning commission was looking at.
So, again, why it's important to chew on it for a little bit, you have five minutes and two more.
But still, thirty five minutes and then two more topics after this, so.
But I think it would be helpful to get through each one of these, cuz having this conversation and, you know, staff is doing the best that we can. To A, channel the applicant's request, and B, channel the planning commission's uh decision-making process. But having some space to have some consideration, I think is important.
You know, I hate to, I hate to ask this question of staff, but if if we are gonna make a decision on something. Can't we have the real facts, not, not the, well, the line might be off here by fifty feet or whatever. Because they, the overlays don't match up with what's real, I mean, I notice that once in a while when we do look at GIS.
That's a good conversation to have with your IT director.
Well, yeah, but if they can't do it, they can't do it, so staff might have to draw this out and say, move this over here and.
My, one of my main themes that I tell everybody with this is that all of the conditions, all of the parameters of the master program are are ground verified in the field. So we, our parcel lines are so and so accurate, our buffers are so and so.
That is not unusual for the parcel layer in GIS to be off with the aerials, that's just a normal. In 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 every GIS application because of, we're looking at the flat parcel layer versus the. Aerial which is has the circumference of the earth.
You have to believe the earth is round.
So just one last question on this, how many total properties like are in this request?
How many total?
Roughly eight.
So eight properties, and then they all are. Natural. For PC recommendation. Then seven out of the eight properties want to go back to. Or stay at. So seven.
That's a, I mean, how, how common is that, that's a real conundrum to me, that this having a natural strip and then high. High residential development within the same vertical buffer zone. That seems like really hard to manage, cuz whichever way you go, you're, you you can't win.
I think the, yeah, the more common scenario here is that i- if you just picture that those lots on the south end just went into the sound. That's normally what you see, and you see you've got your house and you've got quite a vegetated shoreline, and in those instances, it could be natural, you know, if it's not been altered. But it's really looking at, bring, not trying to bring the structures in, and and yeah, maybe this is a case where the board's decisions to change. The buffers have changed this calculus, it's an additional fifty feet.
My fifty feet, both on both sides.
Uh, what you highlighting is is correct, if the board makes a decision at the parcel layer, it will create a conflict. And I think uh what I encourage the board to see is, what are you trying to protect with this buffer?
Cuz it's already protected in its own existence.
Really what you want to protect, because making the decision at the parcel layer absolutely is gonna be creating a conflict. Because if you go by the the homeowners association and go natural, they perceive, and then the next parcel is gonna be rural conservancy. The buffers will be different, so you will create a conflict.
Is there a tax benefit to somebody? Less taxes or something?
The assessor's office theoretically takes all that into account.
I mean, nothing can be built on it any way you look at it, so what's the point, that's kind of what I'm trying to figure out. We can come back and have a headache another day.
We didn't bring you guys the easy ones, just.
All right, so the third case we're gonna look at here um is on the west side of Eld Inlet, uh, we're looking at reach. Eld uh two A to two B, which includes these two residential parcels in a sand spit that you can see in the upper left-hand picture. Um, it is currently conservancy and it's proposed to be rural conservancy. And the landowner has requested um shoreline residential for this area. That same landowner had actually requested the rural conservancy and the planning commissioners um granted that. Um, since that time, they've, I think, educated themselves more and understand more about how shorelines are regulated and protected. And are essentially requesting that this area turn back to shoreline residential. So some things to think about here, um, is that this area, this reach of a couple parcels does feature residential development. With homes, vegetation, clearing and docks within shoreline jurisdiction. These homes are a bit further back from the water than what you see further to the south here. Um, but the whole area has residential development pretty close to the water. Um, there's still some native vegetation that's visible in the parcels. Um, and the area contains a sand spit and an estuary, which we know that estuaries are good habitat. Uh, this reach, like some of the others we've seen, exists in a sort of transition zone. Where you see much more dense residential development and shoreline impacts um further to the south. And then, which is proposed to be shoreline residential, and to the north, it's much less dense, and that area is proposed to be natural. So some options for the board would be to designate these parcels as shoreline residential, um, which would match everything to the south. Or to retain the rural conservancy SED that was set by the planning.
What's the current designation?
Currently, it is conservancy, I think.
It's, that's what it says.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Yes, so currently conservancy, it was, that whole area was proposed to be shoreline residential uh back in twenty thirteen. Um, so had they not written in, it would have.
You were gonna move it from conservancy residential until he piped up and said.
And had since, you know, reconsidered that request.
Is that a dock?
Uh, yes, there are some docks and I'm gonna zoom to that area.
Andy, as you're doing that, can you say that again, so if that property owner would not have said anything, it probably would have stayed shoreline residential.
Correct.
Stayed shoreline residential, I thought you said it was conservancy.
Yeah, so let me show you.
With the staff's recommendation.
There you go, thank you, that's better.
So here is the current, what it currently is, um, currently conservancy, we're looking at this area here. The proposal now, that the planning commission has made their recommendation is conservancy. If I zoom out a bit, you can see, it's a transition zone, it's in between. All these down here, which are more heavily developed, and this up here, which is more natural. Um, but yeah, that land use really does change, down here, you've got all these homes super close to the water, close together, bulkheads.
Go back to the proposed, please.
Is that additional fifty feet gonna make a difference there too, isn't it?
Potentially.
So without the property owner raising their hand, the likely designation on that yellow would have been pink.
It was pink until, yeah, until the planning commission changed it to yellow at the.
Staff believed that there was enough disturbance and development there to.
The planning commission honored the request of the applicant.
Was why, why it was gonna be pink.
I think there's, again, it goes back to, um, it's not always a perfect fit, but, you know, which. These two parcels, what are they closer to, are they closer to everything to the south that is much more heavily developed? Are they closer to what's north of the natural, they are kind of in the middle. But when, in twenty thirteen, when the, when the SED report was created and these reach breaks were done, the call was made back then to to bring those in with everything to the south.
Can you put that yellow stuff back up there again?
Yeah, absolutely. Current or the proposed?
Okay, so it, okay, that's current.
That's today.
Okay, give the proposal, can you do that too? Okay, so any way you look at it, the dock and a house. Now, if you add the other two feet, several houses, I mean, the other fifty feet, uh, you'd have several houses included in there.
Yeah, it's just that these two houses are the only ones that are in this region, it's very, very small.
Okay, so, somebody wants to, I don't know. Build a doghouse or a carport or a mother-in-law house or something, that is gonna restrict them from doing something like that, right?
It's potentially gonna make that development subject to the rules of the SMP. If it's within the buffer.
Stepping back just away from that a little bit, again, the property owner there got what they wanted with the yellow, now they want the pink.
They want what?
The pink, they want it to be residential.
Yeah, because they wanna do something, probably, right?
I think they were, yeah, I think this one out of, this one's a little bit more. Clear cut to me, right, I. Compared to the last one we just reviewed.
So again, we don't need a decision now, but just kind of putting it out on the table.
Yeah, okay.
And what is it, I mean, I know in the emails that I was reading in the file, they were talking about his concern was protecting that sand spit. And then he was like, well, then I learned that, you know, that it would be, I mean, what was his?
It's never gonna, I mean, this area is, how, no one's gonna be able to develop that between the shoreline master program and floodplains, regulations, critical areas. That there's estering wetlands out there, there's other factors at play that are gonna protect this area.
Even if it's residential.
Even if it's shoreline residential, and I think that's what they came to realize from from the reading of their email.
I mean, there's houses built pretty close to the water, right up the chain from the bottom, I don't, I mean, and staff is gonna go with pink. It seems like it's not a big.
Yeah, this one seems.
I agree with you, this one probably is the.
Can we start with this one?
Trying not to push, so, uh, consensus then on residential?
Well, I mean.
Are you ready to make a decision today?
With this one, our commissioners, do we wanna strike one out, or do we wanna wait? I, for me, I, I don't see, this one is. If it was staff recommendation before, and there was some compu- fusion from the property owner on like, you know, maybe. And just from from reading some of the, the documents in the file, right, and. Just looking at the map, I think it just makes sense for the shoreline.
And that would be honoring the citizens' request, that shoreline residential.
So I'm, for me, I'm, I'm a thumbs up for that one, but I'm not sure if my statements are ready to.
What's, what's that dock thing, that, yeah, what is that? It's an odd dock.
It looks like a dock, uh, and I know this down here, this is a a walkway that they use to access the sand spit, but yeah, it looks like the neighbors got a pretty.
Commissioners to be mindful of the process, this is good, maybe an easy decision, but uh you may wanna capture all the decisions all at once.
Really, okay.
Well, it's good to have the concept of what staff is considering.
And I, I can't recall what my original recommendation to planning commission was off the top of my head, but. I can say that it makes sense to me, knowing everything I know about the methodology as to why these would have been lumped in with everything below it. It, the original call does make sense to me.
Let's go to the fourth one then.
Which is the second one from the top on here.
So the last case study we'll look at uh is reach uh MEL or L six to seven. The reach as a whole is outlined in blue, and the breach is currently conservancy, is proposed to be natural. The owner of the parcel that's outlined in yellow has requested a rural conservancy SED for their property. Some information for the board here, um, there's a lot of heavily vegetated area within shoreline jurisdiction across this reach. There are a few homes that are mapped within shoreline jurisdiction, uh, and some vegetation clearing and landscaping in shoreline jurisdiction on the subject parcel. There are no bulkheads or docks visible in this shoreline reach, but there is one aquaculture operation adjacent to the parcel. Uh, the landowner leases their tidelands for aquaculture. This property is sort of in the middle in terms of development and shoreline alteration, uh, kind of between two. Two distinctly different land types, uh, properties to the east are smaller and are more heavily developed, closer to the water with bulkheads. Looking to the west, uh, the subject parcel, the conditions are far more natural, there are larger lots, less disturbance within shoreline jurisdiction. So the options for the board here to consider would be to provide a rural conservancy SED to the subject parcel. And natural to the remainder, or go with what's the current proposal is, um, to have natural for the entire reach.
How does that aquaculture, you know, kind of play in terms of other areas around, and there's a lot of aquaculture in Eld Inlet, I think?
I don't think that operation was actually there when um, uh, they were. When they did the inventory characterization, if you look at the aerial photography, I think it's kind of borderline, I don't know if that would have swayed things or not. But it, yeah, that's the only parcel I think out there that has something like that, so here's the reach, this is the subject parcel. So we got current, it's conservancy, proposed for that whole area is natural. And this is Fry Cove County Park right here for reference, I think. Think that's the one that borders Fry Cove.
So, but I mean, it, well, okay, so if that's even more of a question than if, if this is kind of newish. Does the presence of aquaculture usually, you know, oh, that's disturbed, there's, you know, there, that's not gonna be natural appropriate? Or does, or is it totally consistent with natural to have aquaculture there?
I think one of the parameters for conservancy is, is the parcel being used in um. For resource uses, right? Um, I think it's one of many considerations, cuz there's also how heavily altered is it, um, you know, what, does it have. Environmental constraints like steep slopes or things like that, so the aquaculture would be one factor that would be considered.
Or is this one, which?
This is, uh, so it's, we're looking at this parcel right here. Oh, sorry. I meant to mark this down.
Just one parcel?
Uh, it's just one parcel who made the request.
Is that the one that goes right through the house?
Maybe.
It looks like it's splitting the house in half.
So it starts on page seventeen of your briefing materials.
So, with the cursor, can you point to where the?
Where the house is?
Yeah, where the property owner that's making the request, their property.
It is this parcel right here.
Okay, so it is on the transition point.
And so the house is split in half by. And then it'll be totally in if we go to the two fifty?
I would, yes, this, this house looks like it would be completely in.
So it's proposed to go green and they're asking it to stay yellow?
Right, they're asking to be like their neighbors to the east versus their neighbors to the west. Uh, and if you can.
Sorry, I kind of missed.
It's page seventeen of your.
So go back to the proposed, so the question, Chairman Hia.
This parcel here.
It's current, the planning commission recommendation is to make it green.
This one did not go to planning commission, this came in, this came in as part of your comments. Yeah, this is the only one of the four that um was simply with the board versus.
And so they would like for it to stay yellow? And it's right on that cusp.
There is a house and there is aquaculture.
That's the case that they're making.
And the case for making it natural is just kind of the.
Got ate up by the house.
There's house on the one above it too.
I mean, they've got quite a bit of, if I can guess what was decisions that were made ten years ago, there's quite a bit of vegetation in between the house and the shoreline. Um, that house is set back fairly far, I don't know if that aquaculture operation was there at the time, and, you know, they're looking.
What is that, isn't that aquaculture going on right there?
Looks like flip bag.
So when he says at the time, what are you referencing?
Uh, in fact, in twenty nine to twen- two thousand nine to twenty eleven, when we were doing our in, original inventory characterization and looking at this. I think um this operation went in right around there, a little aerial photos.
Could have been sold two or three times since then or something.
So, just trying to forensically figure out why the decision, why, why is that line here versus here, so CSI.
Yeah, I think I'm okay on this one too.
And so the, the real difference, um, you know, with the buffers being adjusted, the real difference is. Maybe the kinds of things that could vary to do. Dock, uh, or.
Yeah, and also, uh, any of these existing uses that are going on out here are not going to be affected by the update, it's, it's changes in use to the property. So if they wanna do something in addition, the existing aquaculture is gonna be able to keep going. Um, you know, if you have landscaping or you have a dock or whatever, you can keep it, you can maintain it, it's new land uses that, that are really the issue. It's new land uses that, that are really the issue.
So, okay, reading, reading this, so there's, are there two parcels then and? I'm just reading. So it's just one parcel, but um. So the proposed nat- natural, I'm, and I'm reading this is from the, uh, I'm guessing the property owner. Uh, the proposed natural SED begins at my eastern property line that includes a portion of the ravine that is shared with my neighbor. Um, why that parcel is not proposed to have a natural designation isn't clear to me from an viewpoint provides nearly identical functions. As much of its property includes the ravine even more so when you consider the buffers that are mandated, so I, I, that part kinda confused me. Are they? Then, you know, then on the next section there. You know, my property lies just east of the entrance of, to the Fry Cove, which is already kind of built out to the capacity based on building codes. So I'm just, I'm just trying to kinda get some clarification kind of on that. Not asking to speak on behalf, just, just.
Yeah, I think they're, I mean, they're making their case for why they believe it should be conservancy.
Okay.
I mean, kinda what Andy just said in terms of the development to the south, right? Andy?
Yeah, well, sorry.
So go back to the proposed. And they have all the houses in the yellow.
Yeah.
And they want theirs changed to yellow. That's the bottom line.
They're asking for this line to.
That makes sense to change it to yellow to me.
It's the current?
Currently, it's all conservancy, but you can see even as of nineteen ninety, there was a split made and a recognition that to the east, it's more heavily developed. That was changed to match parcel lines in this case, that, which is generally the methodology, or
Close.
Looks like there's a section line or something running through there.
But I think that that gets us through the four in terms of what you have to consider and then when we come back and have further conversation.
How can we remember everything we talked about? So really quick, that was in, that was important, I think. So the current is that it's residential. So we're already bumping that pink to, to yellow under the new proposal, right?
Um, yeah, this is an area where it's, it's currently rural, um, but, uh, you know, looking across that reach, I'd have to.
Sorry to interrupt, do the blue on the applicant property line. Ready to do the blue, the.
Oh, uh-huh, sure. I wish this was not in the way, but it is. Yeah, it's this parcel.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you. I'm just, I'm just just thinking that in terms of the overall plan, we're already bumping up the protection for this whole area. Cause they had pink and, and their pink's gone up to yellow.
Yeah, yeah, that whole reach to the south, I mean, it, I'd have to look at inventory characterization as to why it's going to conservancy, but my guess is that it's that mix of development and function remaining.
Now do the current with that blue highlighted. So it's not residential currently.
Yeah, the area to the east is.
It's conservancy.
It's commenting on the area kinda down below.
Yeah, looking at the whole scheme, we're, we're really bumping up protection by picking the pink and making it yellow and taking the yellow and making it green. This little margin, I mean, being flexible on this one little marginal property, I think, doesn't, doesn't compromise the overall increase in protectiveness that we're, that we're seeing in across this whole area.
Okay.
See why these decisions are normally made zoomed way back out.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's good to see that.
Yeah, I'm.
We'll make sure they, when we bring this matter for your decision, we'll list on the agenda that you will make in that session.
Oh, is it only marked as information?
What? Do, would you like to do next for your next, uh?
I think that would be a nice.
Eleven minutes.
So.
I have a que- I have a question, maybe at least a clarification on that, this issue that you've got about. Cause I didn't really understand. E O C C decision matrix items with no public comment. I don't really understand that because I, it was like, I advocated to put all those stuff in there and what I was interested in is the opposite, like, I wanted all that in there and then, because it called you recommended it. And then I wanted the board to hear if, if one of those things that we added post-planning commission drew a, a significant amount of public comment, then we could, you know, sort of chew on that, but if it didn't get public comment, then why, why is that? Why, why would we focus on that?
So um, it's essentially.
Stop sharing the screen.
Sorry? Oh, yes, thank you. Um, it's, it's a procedural point, so the, all those points got into the uh draft and you receive public comments from the, from the public. Um, there are some items that were introduced to that draft that did not receive any public comment. So that the issue or the question is just, is the board ready to make a decision to leave those items in so that future work sessions can focus on the pieces that did get public comment? Cause anything that got substantive comment, we're gonna come back and.
Oh, you're just trying to knock these out.
Trying to knock it out. I think it, yeah, it was, one of the commissioners had suggested that, that that may be a way to do it. What didn't ruffle any feathers, let's set that aside if, if that's the pleasure of the board and then focus on the pieces that did get comment and, and.
Well, that was certainly mine too.
Yeah.
And I think that just reflecting back, the board wanted to work big on the buffers and then honor the citizen requests with the SEDs and then knock out the stuff that didn't ruffle feathers, as Andy says, and then chew on the big stuff, the other items that did receive comment. So I think we're making progress and appreciate the opportunity for next steps.
So for the next decision points, um, so then do we have at the next meeting, do we have to confirm those since no decision?
Well, we, we probably have to um come back, get some perspective and you can reaffirm that decision.
So then at the next meeting, we're going to reaffirm those.
They changed to the two fifty, yeah.
Um, we're going to go through the proposals that we went through today and make decisions. Um, and then I guess, you know, the third item.
The, on that matrix that you just discussed.
Whether to retain reflected changes, that decision point number three already and um maybe squeeze one more decision point on there.
Maybe introducing the concept of variances.
Yeah, right, coming back with variances.
At that point, introducing the com- uh, the concept of variances, put some thought behind that for you to think about it and then the follow-up will be concentrated on the decision for variances.
I think it really.
Which I, I believe it's gonna be robust.
I think it hampers us to kind of string out this out with time in between. Well, I know staff needs time to, cause you guys did a lot of work here, so I, maybe I retract what I was gonna say, cause I'd like to just have like, you know, every two weeks or every week, I frankly, I just like to have every, two hours every Friday morning or something just until we get this work through. Or every other Friday morning or whatever it is, cause it's like, the longer it is, then we have to sort of re, get our minds back into it and some, we get halfway through decisions and that's tr- that's tough. We're trying to meet a deadline.
Great idea, as long as your schedules uh can put an emphasis on, on this process. I think it has to be a commendable for your schedules as well.
Well, I, I would. Mondays and Fridays are the most flexible.
Yeah, Fridays are the most flexible for me. Commissioner Edwards, how are your Fridays?
So we'll work on that and, and work with your assistants to eliminate any conflicts, considering this is a priority for the board.
I think, you know, just.
This coming Friday, this coming Friday doesn't work for me.
Yeah, usually I schedule like doctor's appointments during that time, so just as long as it doesn't, cause usually it takes forever for me to get in, so. That's the only thing, but anything else on Fridays, they're usually staff or constituent meetings that I can, I'm more flexible and moving around. So I'm happy to meet on Fridays to kind of get this through. Um, I think this is a good one to kind of bring sooner since it's still fresh on our minds and there was a lot of conversation around them and we can get some decision points out. That's okay with.
Yeah, just for the, since we're talking about it, for the record, I'll share briefly, this is the list of topics for future briefing. So in addition to the things that Romero listed off, this is what I've got, this is what I captured from, from your discussions post-public hearing.
So keeping it moving is a good idea.
Keeping it moving is a good idea, cause there's quite a bit here and that last one, that review of substantive public comments, that, that, that's a lot.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
I see we got sea level rising coming up. Did we get a, a location of the marker?
There's not in Thurston County that I'm aware of.
Although if you go out to, if you go out to Boston Harbor, you can see where that big flood slash king tide was that took out the ice cream machine.
Yep. We haven't had that problem since nineteen fifty-four.
There you go.
So, so what's new? Yeah, there was fifty, seventy years in between, but what was new? I'm looking for a marker, a real marker. I don't care if you tell me it's on the, on the statue of liberty, I don't care. Just tell me where a marker is.
Apparently there is that a marker.
There is no markers. There's concept, but there are no markers to show there's a difference. I, I copied a cha- a chapter out of a book for you. I read that, I read it. And it talked about how you, it made, what caught my attention was that it made a reference to why it's less prominent on the west coast, like in the western areas and then there, there's other areas where it's more pronounced that you can see the evidence. Even today, uh, with this new hurricane over in Florida, they talked about the, the effect that those king tides and the moon being closer, I don't know, they called it something.
Blue moon.
Blue, was it the blue super moon?
Blue super moon. So when everything comes together, yes, I agree, it's higher. But everything has come together before and I think the last time everything came together for that place in Florida was a hundred and twenty-six years ago. That was the last time they had it up like that. Well, I'm not saying we aren't having climate change, we are. It's been fluctuating for millions of years and recently, eighteen fifties, uh, they had a little ice age in the eighteen fifties. That's why all the Irish folks came over here, the potato famine. And my family came here in the eighteen fifties. It was completely different. It was prairies and the ice froze over in the lakes that deep. I still have an ice house at my house that was built to store the ice in and they put it in there and kept it, you know, until August. And, and so times are changing, I agree. But I don't think it's anything like they're proposing and a lot of the things we're doing, we're, we're shutting down a coal plant. At the same time, hundreds of them are being built in Europe, hundreds. Hundreds of coal plants. So what effect are we having by shutting down one?
So I would say, from the staff's perspective, thank you for your great work on SMP. We will continue to move forward at our next briefing. Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Good job. Really, I mean, you do a good presentation of trying to make it, I appreciate it. It's comp- complicated.
Yes, and I, this is kind of like a lot to bring and I think just working with all of us, thank you, as we process in different ways. Ten twenty-seven, we're adjourned.